Okay, we have a quorum. It is 6:36, so let's open the January 9th, 2024 meeting of the Town of Rutland Planning Board. First up, we have a couple of minutes. First minutes on November 28th, which I believe was a modification, correction.
Motion to accept the November 28th minutes.
Do we have, oh, it was an update?
Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't accept it.
Yeah, they didn't accept that at the time because there was a change that needed to be made. So as long as you gentlemen have the change.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to accept the December 12th. But I might have a correction, but I'm not sure.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
The last page. Tim brought up an email about referencing the recent liquor license. John was tasked with determining if it falls under the board's jurisdiction or not. Did that not fall under us as special permit?
For a liquor license? What was the, what was the property, Dick?
It was Eastview Farm.
Actually, I've got to check on that. I, I didn't follow up on that as of yet, so.
It was, it was in reference to the agricultural accessory bylaw.
Usually liquor licenses are granted through the select board?
Correct.
Yeah.
But there were, there were terminations, though, that have to...
Yeah, let me, so what was that?
Eastview Farm?
Let me check on that, Dick. I apologize, I haven't checked on that.
I don't think we have any language in the accessory bylaw.
That's all I was getting through, Norm, is what was Dick and I talking about. Is there anything that we need to add to, as part of the site plan review for that, for their liquor license or anything like that?
Okay.
Wasn't sure.
Let me check on that.
Tamika, were you gonna say something?
I was just gonna say, John, this was the one that you followed up on from last time, and you had emailed Tim about it.
Do you have an email from me, Tim? Thank you, Tamika. I don't remember that email.
That'd be two of us.
You had emailed Tim to follow up on the matter from the last meeting about how, at the time, the town planner had been asking for certain information.
That's right, that was the question. Oh, it was the fees collected, so yeah, so basically...
We're talking about the giving in all the documentation for the 25% and all that stuff. And the answer is, that's really not within our purview.
No, and I think, I think that was something, from what I learned, that the town planner had...
On the first?
Yeah, on the first one had put in, but it hasn't been practiced since because, because, like you said, there was no...
It was done on Lilac Hedge for some reason, don't know why, which would be the second one, actually. First one wasn't required, and then in your email, because of the, I'll go like... Time-consuming that it's gonna take, that's really, can be handled by, I'm guessing, the treasure collector and/or the estate can handle that.
Right. So I think that's what that was in relation to. So I did follow up on it, thank you, Tamika, I'd forgotten about that.
Yeah, from the liquor license, I think there was nothing... The only thing I think I was referencing, Dick, was, is it a liquor license or a farm brewing license? That's the only thing I could never, I couldn't distinguish among notes that I saw in the...
I think as far as site plan review, depending on the project, if that's gonna be part of the project, I would think that the planning board could make a condition of approval that they need to obtain the proper licenses, but that would be, that would be through the, that would be through the select board and/or the state. So I think that's as far as a condition could go, is to require them to have that, and maybe even provide a copy to the board if the board wanted to.
I, I think that would be a good idea.
Put in the file. I like, I like documents into that site plan review file that you have now with all the different...
Yep.
The four, I think we've got four approved. I'm having a brain death. Hillside, Lilac, Jordans, and Eastview. We got four on the books right now, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Okay, so I'll, I'll look into that and make sure we have copies if it applies.
All right.
So that's that.
Any other discussion in the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next up is a public hearing for an accessory dwelling.
A and R, Norm.
Brittenello Drive.
Really?
Yeah, I sent, we sent out, there was an amended agenda.
Oh, okay.
So we have the A and R for Brittenello Drive.
Okay, okay, very well. So, someone here representing that? One up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because this just looks to me like paperwork, and I actually changed a lot lines already.
Well, and, and Dick did have a question this morning about this, and I did follow up on it just quickly. This is chapter land, chapter 61A. In speaking, in speaking to the applicant beforehand, there's no intention to build a home on this or take it out of chapter land?
Nope, they in 61A, it's a hayfield.
And?
Is used by Jordans, it's used by Jordans.
And just to, just to clarify...
Thank you, Fred.
I know.
Dick raised a good question about...
It's rotten hell if we ever did that.
About the right of first refusal option. Since this is a family, this is family land being transferred, the right of first refusal option is not triggered if the change of use is for the construction of a residence for an immediate family member. So even if it were to build a single-family home, granted, the assessment would change if they did build a single-family home, but the right of, they wouldn't be required to go through the right of first refusal as long as it's an immediate family member. So hypothetically, that would, that would be the case. But in this case, they're not intending on this being a buildable lot.
Just as a point of introduction, Dot is Fred and Shirley's daughter. I'm the son-in-law, Mike Salzes. And so our intent is to make sure this gets preserved.
And it's kind of hard to say, but related, but hide. Because it was my stepmother was, Freddie was her uncle.
Oh. There we go.
So other than that, this is a pretty straightforward.
Only question I was gonna ask, only thing I was gonna ask you. Kept up on all the paperwork for the 61A?
Yes, we have, yes, we have.
I was just in the assessor's office, talking to her when I came and brought this, the original one up.
Okay, because I know that some people in town haven't filled the paperwork out for years, if not decades. We do it every year. We just wanted to make sure that that was, because that'll keep this in a contiguous state.
And Randy Jordan from the Jordan Farm, Hazen and...
We do it every year.
I'm good, I just, I just wanted to make sure, that was the only thing.
And I did talk the assessor's office. She did say that there's, there's a little bit of a process to switch it to me and, and that. So paperwork kind of thing, that's all.
So this 11 acres, does that consist of this also?
No, it's a section.
Just this section?
Yeah, just that one.
Right here, yeah, yeah. This is other farmland.
Yeah, that's what lands up in here.
Yeah, yeah, there are.
And I was just telling Norm a long time ago, I remember walking up because of this narrow...
So this is your house, right?
It is, yes, technically it is our house. Our son is living in it now, because we have moved to Dover. Grandkids move, and you have to move, you know.
But we still own the house.
But we still own the house, yes.
I do remember the original A and R, because it was, it was, I think this was just a little pathway for the septic system.
Septic system, wow, you had a good memory.
No, I don't.
So, so like I said, this, this is pretty straightforward. I don't think there's any obstacles here for the board to trip us up.
And that parcel, since it's listed as a parcel...
Out of the bigger parcel.
Yeah, it does continue down, land does continue down here. This is basically the whole hayfield area.
That's it?
And we maintain it, maintain it as such with the Jordans.
So is this getting broken out into a new parcel from the main parcel? Is that what the A and R is for, and also the change?
Yep.
It's...
I see, I'm confused, that's...
No, there's nothing bright, nothing's gonna...
Should probably show what, where you're putting the line in the middle of the property.
But the line isn't changing.
That's what I'm confused about.
You can probably see from that one over there.
Let me grab a quick look, see if I can figure out what I'm trying to... Remaining land.
Because this remaining land is Shirley Warren's, yes, and there are two houses that were just put in up in here, or...
Yeah, not too long.
So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is this A and R, does this parcel six already exist?
Does it exist, mean as a parcel?
Right now, yes.
You mean as a hayfield?
No, no, as a registered...
As a parcel, are you creating a new lot, or is this an existing lot? What's happening here?
That's what I'm struggling with.
This was actually decided on back in '08, actually.
And are any lot lines moving, or any lot lines?
Oh, no, 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 no.
The original, the original, were up here and then jogged out.
The rest of the farm area comes down.
So you pulled this out of that?
That area, right.
It was a long time ago.
A long time ago.
Yeah, it tracks with our will and it tracks. I'm sorry. I'm not used to these things.
That's okay, no, 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 no.
This was done a while back.
Yes, because there's a page and a, up here in the notes, okay. I'm liking this engineer, whoever you're there right now.
It's Burton Engineering.
No, I don't need to look at a giant one.
There's another one under here, did you?
Here, here, take this one, I'm good.
Sure?
Yep. As long as I saw that note, which indicates that that parcel's already been taken out, I'm good.
You said that you'd already taken this out of the rest of the land.
Because that's right here, Norm, it basically talks about that parcel.
So no lot lines are changing?
Yes.
All you do is... This is just basically transferring the lot.
Right.
That's it. This is just, this is just a legal mechanism, this is not physically changing.
Exactly, it's part of the just will.
That's why I think... Follow the letter of the law, that's all.
Just, just, oh, sign, let them go.
Yeah, I just, I, the first explanation was, it looks like that parcel was being taken out of the larger piece, but I could see with the note that Burton Engineering did, that, no, no, that's already been done, this is just a transfer of name.
Right, exactly.
That's all it is, yep.
Yep, good enough.
Is this up here changing too?
No, no, nothing's changing, nothing's physically changing.
Or names, I should say. The name is, well, it's still our name. But beyond, you know, it's, it's our son who's moved into the house, so. So what may change is if we give him the house, so then it becomes his house.
But again, for the sake of this board...
Right, there's no lines changing.
That's irrelevant, they just...
Parcel six is the only thing we're focusing on?
That's it.
That's a legal name change, and that's it.
Right, exactly, that's what it is.
I'm good, don't confuse me.
Second cousin twice remarried.
I guess I'll make a motion to endorse. I always want to say approve, it's endorse. 101, I'm sorry, 101 Brittenello Drive, parcel six.
Right.
With a legal name change.
We just felt this would be the right, we wanted to do the right thing, that's why we're here.
Yes.
So, yeah. We didn't mean to clog up your schedule.
No, no, of course not.
So, do I have a second on that?
Second?
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you, Jim, out, hold on, they have to endorse the copies and the mylar, and you take the mylar with you, so let them endorse it. What's that? Two physical copies and the parcel.
I remember the stamp.
Stamp is...
Someone wants to date it, doesn't matter who, I don't know where you gentlemen...
Today's the 9th?
Yes.
Don't worry, Dick, I'll sign your name for you.
No. I think it's firing up a way.
Has Dick signed?
No.
You guys need to share that. Oh, that's your key, that's... Oh, that's right, you have to sign the other two.
Hard to keep track of who's signed.
Yeah, exactly.
You go to finance committee meetings, whose pen is this? Where's my pen?
The town pen, I own nothing.
Tim, didn't you work, you worked with me when we did the research for police chief out of...
Yes, yes, for...
Been a while since I've seen you, yes.
We had Hapikowski, yeah. Now he's a select board chairman.
Yes.
Who is?
Yeah, Huberson, I think it is.
Ocam.
Ocam, okay, yeah. I just saw that, he just accepted a resignation from a town clerk. Sorry, Ocam. So, yeah, yeah, I wish they'd have done that with Fire Chief and other stuff down the road, but they chose to go a different route. I like the fact that we had professional people and...
This way since it's made outside.
My opinion, but...
No, I think it worked out good.
Okay, now you folks just have to get this recorded and get the proof of recording back to me with the registry.
Do they have to sign one of these?
Yeah, we don't have the stamp, but I'll think with this.
No, we don't have the stamp, but has everyone signed the copies too?
No.
No, so...
We just need to sign this copy.
Who's the chair of the finance committee now?
Yeah, so Tim needs to sign the copies.
His... Wait a second, let me jump on Facebook and I'll tell you.
He's like a son, isn't he?
No, 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 Joe's not on there. My wife was last year, but she's no longer the chairman, she's just a member.
Alex Moab.
Thanks, that's it.
Yeah, go Tamika.
All right, we gotta sign the whole, I'm the first one to sign.
Oh, who else sign this? Keith, so they need to sign this one. Guys, can you sign that one, please?
Everybody signs this one.
You're all set, so you guys are all set to go.
Do you want to, uh, do you want to put this over the, where the signatures are?
No, I rolled it up, I rolled it the other way, so we'll get...
Excellent.
Thank you, nice seeing you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you're doing too.
Thank you.
Rutland's a great town, but we miss it.
Visit anytime. A little older. Yeah, we all do, the police are still around, right? Yeah, you're right.
They gotta take that one?
No, they take the mylar, that's it, we keep the copies.
Okay. Well, I thought, I thought they had to sign it to say that they...
I know, but we don't have the, I guess, so, I don't know, that's not the way I've ever done it.
We have not normally been signing copies.
Okay.
Yeah.
See, I'm not used to the procedure of what you guys do with them here. I like to have a signed copy, because when we open up the file, when we organize the A and Rs, we have everything unsigned.
And that's simply what the stamp is, it says that they will return a signed mylar to us, and then that stamped, signed copy you see.
So we have to make sure Tamika and I coordinating and do that.
Yep. You keep the stamped, signed copy, right, Norm? It signals that they're gonna bring that mylar back.
Not with our signatures, their signature.
Yeah, they bring the copy back.
Yeah, they bring back the approved copies, or the approved signed copy from the registry of deeds.
Okay.
Next.
Hopefully you don't know why they changed it. Okay, so now we have a public hearing for a special permit for accessory dwelling unit on 5 Madison Ave.
So just to let you gentlemen know, they did do the mailings, and I got copies of the receipts from the post office, and I double-checked with the abutters list and the abounding towns, and everyone got notified.
I have full-size drawings, if anybody wants to see them, just let me know.
You put it on the table, that'll be good if we have questions.
Pretty damn simple, so to speak.
Yeah. The pictures too.
Yeah, looking at the requirements for an accessory dwelling unit and driving by the site, I personally didn't see any issues with it. There's certainly distance and buffer between, between the two properties where they're gonna be doing the addition.
Yeah, I outlined that on one of the pages, there's...
And I saw two egresses, so I was good.
So can you just outline on the plan here, what it is you're adding on to the...
Yep, so the area in the shaded gray here is the accessory dwelling unit, so this is the existing home. This is the layout, so there would be entrances both here, so this is a covered farmer's porch.
You never took a motion to open the public hearing?
We don't usually do that.
Oh, you don't usually do that, okay.
Mostly to close, but not to open.
So it, the, it would be the accessory dwelling unit here, the addition of a covered farmer's porch on the front of the existing house, that would essentially make a covered entrance here. So that's the entryway, and then the rear point of egress would be on a covered porch in the back here. And then in addition to that, just because we're on the subject of egress, a bulkhead, and then another door here into the existing home. So, you know, that's an overview, it's for Barbara, so my name's Nick Anderson, I'm the, my wife, Megan, and I are the existing homeowners. Barbara is my wife's grandmother, and we've invited her to live with us because it's become difficult to live on her own due to her age and being a widow. So she moved in with, she lives with us now, but we wanted to give her a little more space on a place of her own. So that's the, the goal here, and we do have, this is looking at the house. The lot line, if you look at one of the pictures...
Oh yeah, you got a 45-foot buffer.
Yeah, so it's, our, our lot line is kind of skewed to one side, so... So this, the side that the addition on is where we have all the, the, the buffer zone, if you will, and then our driveways on this side, but the line actually ends right at our driveway. So it worked out nicely that there's plenty of buffer.
Yeah, so there's more space on the side you're putting the addition on than on the other side, and... The driveway is plenty large to, I mean, obviously...
It's got a turnaround on, so there's your parking space right there.
Yeah, exactly, so the driveway's got room for...
Yeah, we have 100 feet, so I measured it, and you could fit like 10 cars. Plus we have two garage spots, so, because I know that the requirement was, I believe, three. That you have to have an additional, a space for three additional cars. And this would, this is a one-bedroom, I don't think I pointed that out, but it's a one-bedroom.
And there's, it looks like, and again, with the bulkhead, there's a base, so the foundation's not gonna be a flat foundation, it's actually a basement.
It'll be full depth, yep.
Okay.
Yep, full depth.
So the square footage is 864, I think?
Yep, 846.
That includes the basement too?
No. I believe that's just the living area.
It's living space.
Yeah, but if the basement gets finished as part of the bylaw, I got 169 feet. I'm just asking the board that. We never thought about that in, when we did the accessory bylaw, we anticipated slab.
I don't think we anticipated anything.
Well, you anticipate having 169 square feet of potential land.
Well, I mean, I, obviously that's a good point, but I mean, the board can only consider what's in front of it, and what's in front of it right now is an unfinished basement, so...
Yeah, there's no, no...
It's, it's a good point, I understand your point, it's just, that's, that's a hypothetical situation at this point.
There's no staircase going downstairs, I guess?
No.
Yes.
Yeah, no interior staircase.
Oh, okay.
It would just be the access to the basement, it would be the bulkhead or the main.
It's an outside access.
Yeah, or the main house, because there will be...
Way to get in and out of it.
Yeah, I don't know what you formally call, but we're gonna make a door in the basement so that, so I can bring Barbara's stuff in.
Okay, good enough.
Like we're gonna blow out the concrete wall and have like a steel header put in.
So if the board is satisfied with what it sees tonight, I would ask the board to, if you decide to close the public hearing, before you do, make a motion to authorize me to draft a decision for the project for endorsement at the next meeting, if that's, if the board's ready to do that.
And I don't remember our bylaw, we don't have anything that has to make sure that, I guess that's the board of health, septic system is...
Yeah, that's, that's board of health.
That's there, okay.
So actually, a lot of this is either building department, or in the case of receptive, the board of health, any, any...
Just got to the right page.
Any, any interior is actually building department. Basically, what the board's consideration is the exterior and the parking and the appearance and things like that, and that's obviously the buffer.
It's also not adding any bedrooms.
That's, that's the thing, he's converting an existing bedroom to an office and adding, so it's gonna be a zero, a zero increase, yeah.
Yeah, this is, if you look at the septic design that I provided it...
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
There's four, and then this, in today, this is the current fourth bedroom. If approved, this is gonna be my new office. And then we would adopt this as the fourth bedroom.
And that covers, perfect, just curiosity, that's it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a fair consideration, because you have to account for that.
I don't have any more questions, I'm good.
Well, it looks like a pretty complete application, which I would expect for a last name of Anderson.
Of course.
Oh my God.
Yeah, you must be related.
They're very detail-oriented people.
Tell me you don't have anything to do with mathematics or actuarial science, and you're off the hook.
No.
Okay, good.
Never heard of him.
That was close, that was really close.
He was a teacher.
He was regional.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to instruct our, to draft a decision.
So moved.
So moved.
Norm, if I may, you have to close the hearing first.
They don't have to close the hearing first, I don't think, they can do either one.
We'll close it in a couple of years.
This is not for approval, this is a special permit.
Right.
This is just directing our planner to...
To draft the decision. If you'd like to keep the public hearing open, just in case, you can, absolutely.
No.
Okay.
I'll get, I'll make, after we're done with that, if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Yep. Second that.
Well, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. We didn't finish up with...
Yeah, you got a motion and a second on drafting a decision.
Jesus Christ, we're putting the cat before the horse.
Yes, way before. So any, any discussion on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now...
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on 5 Madison Ave for the accessory...
Madison Avenue.
Madison Avenue, sorry. Madison Avenue, that's in freaking New York.
Yeah, it's spelled much different.
This is, yeah, it's spelled, I have to tell, every time I...
Yeah, that's what I did.
Somebody will follow my...
See, Mr. Wall Street, let's talk. I'll make a motion to close the hearing on 5 Madison Ave for an accessory dwelling unit.
Second. Do I have any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Awesome.
Now, do I have a motion?
Somebody else, let Keith step up, please, a motion time.
A special permit.
Yeah, we'll make a motion to approve the special permit for 5 Madison Ave. And, do I have a second?
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And we should have that decision for our next meeting? And we should have that decision for our next meeting?
Yes, and then I can file it with the town clerk the next day and let your 20-day appeal period begin. And once the 20-day appeal period ends, you can go seek any building permit you need.
Okay. Great, excellent. Thank you, everyone.
You can do it now at his own risk. Yes, you can do it now at your own risk.
File the permit, you mean?
Yeah, you can apply for your permits with the Building Department at your own risk. Usually, I mean, I've only seen one time in my career when there's been some kind of appeal during the appeal period. So.
Very rare.
It's very rare. So if you'd like to seek permits in the meantime.
And would the approval be contingent on like the 20-day period? Meaning I couldn't dig ground?
You couldn't touch ground until after that appeal period.
But at least get the permit.
Yeah, I get the permit, yeah.
And most likely, again, I don't want to speak for the building inspector, but my gut feeling was he would put that in there that, until the decision is signed off, this permit's not active.
Correct, right, correct.
So it's up to you.
You can also start a discussion with the Board of Health to make sure they understand that you're not adding a.
A bedroom.
Bedroom to your septic system, so they don't come out and say you need to dig everything up and add another 5,000 square foot.
Right.
I do believe it was Stephanie who named that road.
Yes, it was.
With the Y as opposed to.
That's one of her kids.
That's right, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that. I assumed it was somebody's child.
I think so.
So you, so.
Oh, really? I know, I don't know them, but I see them walk into the.
So yeah, so you can get going if you'd like to, at least get the process going.
Does, I just had one question about, and maybe this is ultimately for the building inspector, but if a fee was collected upon the initial, my general contractor submitted?
Yeah, that'd be a question for him. That would be up to him.
All right, well, thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Don't let him charge your rent either. Hit you with the rent thing.
Maybe just utilities.
No, 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 no. National grid is going to get a little bit more expensive, not like last year, but.
Thanks, Nick.
Take care, thank you.
All right, next.
Okay, next up, we have.
Any chance before we do the bylaw amendments? Oh, we can actually get the two people that are here for the C up front and get them out of here?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Get you guys out of here by moving into the last.
D.
Yeah, you were on the, you were, you were actually F after your D.
So, item D.
Item D. We have a public hearing for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment of the development rate limitation bylaw to delete item E and renumber the remaining items according to.
It's this first one here?
Yeah. I guess the other thing is, I don't know, when we first discussed it, I thought it needed a little bit more than just this.
No. No, I know, that was discussed.
Was that a question, I'm sorry?
I know, I just remember when we first heard about this, I thought there was a couple of places that we needed to change something.
No, not as far as I'm concerned.
No.
It's exemptions where the.
There was a discussion that more may be needed, but it was ultimately decided that the board agreed that this is all that's needed. Just remove that item, remove the reference to item E in the heading, and that's it.
Just, just if you don't mind, by way of explanation to the public, when the development rate limitation bylaw was written, it allows senior housing to not count towards the building permit total everywhere in town except for the HBDD site, the old hospital site. So how that got that way doesn't matter. It shouldn't be that way. You know, the zoning of the property specifically talks about senior housing. The master plan has senior housing in it. The legislation has senior housing in it. I mean, it's been senior housing since day one. So to penalize the town just is contrary to everything, you know, in the, on the piece of property. So all we want to do is strike that saying that the total number of, the total of building permits is not, the senior housing units at the hospital do not, at the HBDD site, do not count towards that. And just so the public knows, you know, when this project is done, it will generate close to $5 million in revenue in the town's pocket before any tax dollars are received. And on an annual basis, the town will receive almost $800,000 a year in real estate taxes that will be reoccurring with little or no expense to the town because there's no kids in the schools, no plowing of the roads, no maintenance of the roads. So no, you know, the only service realistically that will be provided is police and fire. And those are what they are.
So we're removing an unintended obstacle?
Correct.
Unintended obstacle?
Right.
Basically turn this bylaw into a paradox.
So what I would be looking from the board tonight is for this vote would simply be to recommend favorable action at town.
Yeah, that's what's going to be my motion to, I wanted to make a motion that. Oh, we gotta close the hearing, sorry.
Is there any further discussion on this?
Sure, there's nothing else we had in there that the RDIC is supposed to get a certain percentage of the income?
Oh, Dick, you continue to stir the pot, don't you?
It's not going to be in this bylaw.
Well, tried anyways, what the heck?
So I don't see anybody else on there. Is there any comment or discussion from the public? I hear silence.
Tamika's the only public.
I think that's your answer.
That's the answer, I think.
She left.
Motion to close the public hearing on the change to the rate, I'm sorry, development rate limitation bylaw.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion again? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Now.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the, to the town meeting a favorable recommendation.
Recommend to the select board.
No.
No, it's a town meeting.
Town meeting.
It's a town meeting. Recommend favorable action at town meeting.
Well, okay, yeah, but we send it to the select board.
Yeah, that's fine, but it's. Recommend favorable action at town meeting.
I'll just say, recommend favorable action on the amendment, on the bylaw amendment for the development rate limitation.
Okay, good.
Second.
And once again, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Take a moment. Just as an aside, I told these other gentlemen at our meeting, I was there today. They have, the first foundation is now almost kept. Spoke with the developer's attorney today. He believes they've got five units sold already. So they're making good progress and they're excited about where they're headed.
I was going to say, about that.
I'm handling that. It was at 5 o'clock that I saw.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Let's have a meeting sometime in March, maybe? A meeting for the RDIC.
Yeah, the next meeting is going to be in the living room of the first building.
Awesome.
Thanks, Mike.
And we'll.
Michael.
We'll sit around the fire pit.
The old wishing well, they're going to make that into a fire pit.
Got to have the flag pull up too.
Yes.
Awesome. B. Okay, next B. We have a public hearing for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment regarding personal kennels.
So this was one of the, this and the next amendment were supposed to go forward at the last town meeting. However, upon getting, at the fall town meeting, upon being hired, when I was putting together materials for it, there was a procedural error made with the mailings. So they were pulled, these next two, this one and the next one were pulled back so we could go through the process again and make sure that procedural deficit was not repeated, which it hasn't. The proper mailings went out to the D H C D, Regional Planning H C, and the abutting towns. That was the shortcoming last time. So this is simply bringing back an amendment that was supposed to go forward at the last town meeting to this town meeting to correct that procedural error, so we wouldn't run into an issue with the Attorney General's Office.
For the public, there's been no change from the.
No, no changes.
From the recommendation that we did for the fall town meeting to this, to this one.
Good point, no changes.
Now, just for clarification, basically, the purpose of this is to bring zoning and general bylaws into agreement regarding kennels.
Yes.
Do I have any questions or comments from either the board or the public? Find it all.
Can I raise chihuahuas in Rutland?
You can raise chinchillas if you want to.
How about big roosters?
By all means.
Call a dog.
Giant bunnies.
Hearing none, I would accept a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing for the proposed zoning bylaw amendment for personal kennels. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And a recommendation?
Come on, somebody else.
I talk too much anyhow.
I can make motions for a favorable recommendation for the next town meeting in February for the proposed bylaw for personal kennels.
I have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? From anybody?
They're not here.
Tamika, say something.
I love it, it's an awesome bylaw.
Okay, Tamika, you can't put the kids in kennel, that's illegal. No kids in kennels.
I know, it was illegal before you guys made the amendment, though.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And finally, we have a proposed zoning amendment, zoning bylaw amendment to create a position called Associate Planning Board Member.
Yep, similar to the last one. This is a carryover from the last town meeting. And even though I wasn't involved with this amendment, I strongly support it as the planner because as we see tonight, things happen. Weather happens, illnesses happen, life happens. And, you know, mostly when there's a, you know, when there's a special permit and it requires a supermajority, it can create, you can have a challenge getting a quorum in some cases. So I think this is a good measure, even though the town has adopted the Mullen Rule, which allows a planning board member to miss one public hearing. I think this is a good measure because it'd benefit the board and it'd benefit the applicants coming before the board for special permits. Allow them to maintain a voting quorum throughout the process and not be delayed.
And to add to that, John, it's a training session for future planning board members.
It could be, yeah, exactly. It was, yeah, if someone's, if someone may be thinking about running, they could serve an associate member and, you know, decide whether or not they're interested.
Training tool.
Yep, it is.
Okay, well, is there any discussion on this?
Either done.
We have reviewed it, and I believe Town Council has reviewed it. So. Well, then I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, any questions in the public or discussion from the public?
We just lost them.
Any questions from the public?
It's all that snow out there.
Yeah.
So nobody can accuse you of not giving them the chance to speak?
Yeah, yeah.
So we're going to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing for the Associate Planning Member bylaw amendment.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And a recommendation?
Dick needs to do one, he's been, he's been lacking.
Motion to require favorable action on the amendment.
Close enough.
Second.
And again, discussion from anybody? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. I think, I think he said require, and I love that.
Oh.
But that's okay, but that's okay. They have to vote on it. They have to vote, yes, they have to approve it now, so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, moving right along here. Planning Board bylaw Subcommittee, appointment of Britton Bradford as a member. I don't think we have ever appointed.
No, I was going to say, he's automatically a member because he's on the planning board. The appointments can only happen for people that are not on the planning board.
Yeah, I think so.
So he's automatically, and I just wanted to expound off that, Norm, and say that we have a, I'm putting the agenda together tonight or tomorrow, let's send it to Tamika for a January 17th meeting. I've already got the room with the library in the Hawkins Room reserved for 6:30. And our focus will, if I can get Glenn there. If Glenn doesn't make it, John, I'm going to move that to the back burner, move on to the solar battery bylaw, and we'll concentrate on that, start that up.
I'm supposed to meet with that gentleman tomorrow.
Okay. So I definitely want to send Glenn a little tickler. Tim I tried to get in touch with and I'm not going to, I've learned from my career that when somebody's made a decision and I think I read him well enough, I'm not going to go push or beat him up. I understand his concerns, I understand his issues, and I'm not going to try to make him change his mind. So I can say to this board, it's a huge loss to me on the bylaw subcommittee. I will see, Tamika, have you got any interest from anybody? I was going to ask you. You've gotten any interest from anybody for the bylaw subcommittee?
I'm sorry, no, we have not put it out yet. Because we recently put one out for the vacancy on the Conservation Commission. So we were trying to space them out a little bit. But I do have one ready to go that we can put out there for the public.
Could you do that next week? Obviously, I don't want to do it a couple of days before the meeting, but if you could put it out middle of next week, we can maybe try to see if we get some interest.
I sure can.
Thank you very much. So that's a quick update. So everybody, it's 6:30 next Wednesday in the Hawkins, which is the middle room over here.
So the gentleman's name, I believe, is Tom Corbett, who prepared that. I'm meeting with him tomorrow morning to discuss that. So I'm going to educate myself and get up to speed on.
Yeah, because I was going to ask you, John, if you could start pulling, because his.
Yeah, he sent, he sent me copies.
We're not doing that.
And I'm going to talk to him tomorrow about that and get something simpler, more streamlined that works.
My suggestion, from what I did the research, is there's some on the South Shore. And then really want to find out why, Dick, I think it was OCAM or Berry shot them down.
Okay, okay.
I really, I get it if they were going with the cobalt technology because there ain't no freaking way you're getting cobalt battery technology into my town.
Right.
But if it's, if it's a newer technology that they're using now, he just really, and this is for the board, I didn't like to hear that we just let it burn. That, that really turned me off. But it's a true statement, I did my own checking, and that's the philosophy. The foaming of them before, that, that was early on battery firefighting, is taking the foam. Now, I understand there's more, how do I put this? The foam.
It's more dangerous.
Yes, exactly. Getting it from ground to groundwater and just letting it burn. And I sort of have a problem with that because the release of atmospheric.
Boy, talk about the lesser of two.
Yeah, they're both, see, John, that's the problem, is you can either toxify the ground or toxify the air. Fortunately, we need both.
See, if, if the, if the technology and the, you know, everything, this type of development has not resolved those issues yet, then maybe, maybe we shouldn't be going forward with it.
Personally, I don't want to even go forward with it. After what I've been hearing lately about even house fires with these batteries.
So we'll see. I don't want to jump the gun, I don't want to assume anything.
No, the other person I was going to have you talk to is give Dave George and Barry Tupper Jr., who's the chief, because Holden is already stepped in.
What's his first name, Barry Tupper?
Barry Tupper and Junior. I know Senior well, I used to fix my carpet. And then I'm sure Dave's involved with that, too. I know Senior well, he used to fix my carpet. And then, uh, I'm sure Dave's involved with that, too.
Yep.
Those are two good references.
They're, they're putting in a big.
They, they've moved forward. They've already signed the paperwork, so it's happening.
So maybe we can use potentially that as a model.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
All right.
I just, like I said, I just wanted to put that out there. That was gonna be my go-to if, if Glenn's still having issues. I, I do not wanna stop with Glenn, but if he needs pause time to get documents together for that, we'll give him, we'll give him the pause. I wanna talk with him first.
Have to talk into him, you know, a little while ago, uh, he wants to get really rolling on that.
Oh, that'd be great then. Yes. I will, I'll send him, I'll copy him on the email that, or have, Tamika's got his email address. Make sure that goes out as an invitation.
Yeah, and, uh, I think we do wanna have John there.
I already gave him a heads up that this next Wednesday, he's got an all-expense-paid trip to Rutland. At least this person.
The thing is, you know, we did work on, on, uh, that, that Coppola property. We do have some documents, but we need to refresh ourselves.
Yeah, 'cause I don't.
And that's a good, good way for you to get, get into it.
I don't, see, I don't have anything. Should I probably give Marilyn a call and see if I can get her file?
I think I probably have some.
Okay.
Documents.
All right, Norm, I'll probably have to grab and get some copies.
They're in the backseat of my truck.
Yeah, so I could grab and take them with me?
I'm not gonna go, I'm not gonna go looking for them tonight.
All right.
I can make copies.
Yeah, all right, 'cause I got a scanner at home. I, it's eleven by seventeen, I can scan. Okay, that, that's all I wanna do for the, uh, bylaw Subcommittee. And then my understanding is, um, those two are my hot topics is Glenn's property, the battery. And then if anything else comes up down the road, we will put it on the list. But I'd really like to get those two, if we have possibility, to get them ready for fall town meeting.
Let's not delve too much into this, 'cause this is not on the agenda, so I don't wanna get, I don't wanna go too deep into this.
I also wanna keep, uh, D C R involved in this because I don't wanna see batteries in their zoning waters.
Yep, I'll, uh, I'll bring, yeah, I'll get that all on the agenda. That's a good point. I'll get that on for the agenda for Tamika when I send it to her tomorrow.
This is back to, uh, item three. I think it would be appropriate, uh, maybe for John to just notify Britton that he is automatically a member of the bylaw Subcommittee. He is not required to attend those meetings, but we appreciate it if he can.
I will. I'll let him know.
Yeah. Okay, um, number four, active subdivisions.
So I just wanted to mention, obviously, we did get an update. The board had requested an update from Quinn Engineering that I sent out the other day. Um, would, you know, obviously, we didn't get it at least seven days, so I don't wanna delve into their email. But obviously, we could talk about other, if the board has any questions or any further comments on these subdivisions, certainly, we can talk about it. But just wanted to make sure everyone knew that, that you guys did get that update from Quinn on the subdivisions.
Bryce did have some issues with, that's the first one.
Well, again, I, we didn't get this seven days, so I wanna, I wanna be.
This is me doing the drive-through. This isn't anything.
No, 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 I see, I see Dick grabbing the letter, and so if, if it's something else, fine.
Britnell Estates, Grizzly Drive, subdivision construction not underway currently. Are you kidding me? The damn thing, that first phase is almost done.
All right, we, I, I wanna be consistent with this policy and not discuss items we didn't get.
Top crap. We gotta get back to him and tell him, you know, did he really do it? Did he screw up?
Dick, if you, you can email me. You could've emailed.
I ain't gonna email anybody, for Christ's sakes. You can't say what the hell's on your mind and what the hell's worth.
Well, I guess I wanna talk the first one because I don't, I, I haven't read the report, but I did a drive-through of, of, um, Bryce, Britnell, and I don't, and Bear Hill, too, just me personally, so.
Yep.
It's nothing to do with the report. When I went through Bryce Lemon, which I can't put up there, there's a pothole that's probably on Pioneer Drive, which is the fifth, when you come off of one twenty-two A.
Mm-hmm.
And you go up.
Go up the top rail.
Left to go up to there. Pioneer Drive is the one that goes up. There's a hu- when I say huge, like eighteen to twenty-four inch hot pothole of the asphalt.
So Tim, what I'm gonna ask you to do is, coming out of this, why don't you send me the picture?
Okay.
So I could share it. That's, that's a Klee project. I could share it with Klee.
I'll do that.
Taken care of.
I just wanna get it into the minutes, but, uh, that's the one thing that I found when I did the reconnoiter of all three of those. I didn't get to Noble Hill. I just didn't have a four-by-four to hit that one up. And Forest Hill Extension, I really didn't see that as a biggie for me. But the other three I actually did drive, and, uh, I'm the only, out of all three of those, I think, Norm, you were right, there's not a piece of property at Bear Hill Two that hasn't been sold and under construction right now. I think everyone is done, or at the point where there's a structure going up.
Yeah.
And Britnell Estates.
Phase one is as good as built out.
Yeah, uh, and, uh, Britnell Estates, I got the look on Saturday of, hey, we're building. What are you doing here? And I'm going like, it's Saturday, dude. Electricians, you got plumbers, yeah. So, um, and again, the road was in really good shape.
Yeah.
Um, I was gonna ask John if, which might be in the reports. There's all of these blocks on the side of the crossings, those concrete blocks.
Hmm.
What are they ever gonna be used for?
Across.
You know, the, I, I'd call them Jersey barriers, but they're not, but they look like they were the building stones for.
Off of.
Oh, you mean on the wetlands crossings?
Yeah, but there's tons of them left over, and I was gonna ask, what are they used for?
At least another layer going up there.
Oh, there is, so.
So that, they're still adding those then?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know that, 'cause there's, I gotta say, I haven't seen a report on that being the final report that we asked for on the, on those crossings.
They're not done.
Okay, good enough. I'm good. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Those are the only, that's my three that I walked through.
Just in, this is, I know this is not on the agenda, and it has nothing to do with us, but I just found it kinda curious because I, I will also, today I went over to Britnell Estates, and I went through Bear Hill. I'll take to get there. Bear Hill. All of the sidewalks on Bear Hill are plowed.
Yeah.
And I know the town doesn't do that.
Oh, yeah, no, he goes, I, I saw him going through with the, uh, driving snow blower, you know? I saw him going down into, no, oh, you said, no, you're right. I, I was thinking up on one twenty-two A, that, those subdivisions.
No, no.
Oh, you're right. I don't know.
I know the town doesn't do it.
No.
I'm just.
Hmm.
Some neighbor who wants to go for a ride with the snow.
That's a lot of dr- uh, sidewalk, let me tell you.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
That's great, that's, that's great that they did that.
Had to be a simplicity. Couldn't have been a deer, that's all I'm saying.
Anyway, that was just.
Interesting.
It was just interesting.
Yeah, not typical.
Uh, which, and it didn't, it didn't look like it was all done the same width either.
Hmm, could've been a couple people.
So I'm just wondering if, you know, there's a few people that have decided that.
Do the sidewalk.
Yeah, good for them.
Sidewalks, which.
Hopefully, that continues. That'd be great.
Well, I'll, I'll give Klee credit. I did the same thing, Norm. I came in from, uh, Bear Hill. Bridge looks good. Doesn't look like there's any movement.
Yeah.
Doesn't look like it's dropping.
Tip, 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 don't jinx it.
No, I, I was really, I was an advocate of, of that bridge, or a non-advocate of that bridge way back, so I must, we're working, I think, five years now, four years?
Or less.
Yeah, it is. Anyhow, be quiet.
That's, we won't have to worry about.
I might.
Do you think a car could slide off?
No, my fear was, it's the cost of, of repairing that in ten or fifteen years would be millions, and it'd be on the town.
Yeah.
It won't be on that. If they can get the money.
It's a bridge.
Still, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be on the town, though.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's a DOT property.
Across, across as wetlands.
So the town couldn't do repairs there because it's not town property.
The OT is in charge of bridges.
I didn't think that was classified as a bridge, if I remember.
Oh, yeah.
Documentation.
It is, definitely.
Okay, all right, that's good. Move on.
It's a bridge over troubled water?
Yeah. If the bridge is, it's a bridge over almost no water.
Almost no water, yeah.
That still drives me bananas. Okay, um.
No correspondence.
Correspondence, town planning report upcoming in public hearing.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Uh, we are gonna have a public hearing coming up on the meeting in February um, for an estate lot at Twenty-three Miles Road. That application has come in, and, uh, legal ad has been placed in the paper. So, um, just wanted to give you a heads up that that's gonna be a public hearing in February.
For an estate lot?
Yes. So, um.
Miles Road.
Yeah, you go down the hill, right near the, where the, where the rail trail is, down at the bottom.
Yeah, if you make a left, that's Miles Road. I didn't think there was any property on there.
Yeah, it, it backs up to where that, um, Sucey's.
I was gonna say, Sucey's property almost goes out to.
Oh, okay, on that, on that side of it, yes, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so that's coming.
Yeah, he did have it coming out on Miles Road.
All right.
Um, and office organization, um, supposed to get the two new desks today, but the snowstorm somehow over the weekend slowed it down, so they're coming in on Thursday. So, um, so I, I would welcome anyone, um, early next week to come on in and check out the new configuration once it's, once it's done. I was hoping to have them in today because every time the roof leaks, it drips about a foot to my left where I sit at my desk. So I was looking forward to getting my desk out of there, but can't do it yet, so.
And I stopped in today just to see the desk.
So I thank you for approving that, and, um, like I said, they should be in by Thursday, so that'll be a big improvement.
You, uh, has anybody from our facility, which would be D P W, looking into repairing that roof?
I can't answer that question. That's, that's beyond my pay grade. I know they have, but I don't know where that stands.
I thought it was Tamika's job to go around and hold the bucket.
Oh, no, I, 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 I've come into the office, I've come into the office, and there are buckets sitting there, um, next to my desk, already catching the water, so.
The reason I'm asking, because it's our plant, or, you know, we're working with the planners, seems like other buildings around here have emergency heating and other things repaired, so I'm, anyhow.
The only thing is, flat roof.
Oh, it's gonna take the, uh.
I would think that they would not wanna try doing that. Yeah. All right.
Is there, um, this has to be voted on, too, if they were, or did they already approve?
Yeah, that's, again, I, that's, I have no knowledge of that.
It depends on whether it's a small repair or, my guess would be, I don't remember them doing that roof at all. My guess is it needs to be replaced.
Yeah.
Not since it was a library.
Yep.
All right, I won't say anymore.
I'm gonna take some dope.
The only thing is that I did call and ask about the master plan. How come it wasn't on the?
Yes, that, that.
Because Tim is, is, is behind schedule. I've still got about six more pages to finish up of markups. At, that's, it's on me. I, I wanna get the whole thing done, PDF it, get it to this guy, and then, uh, or get it to the whole board if they want it, 'cause I'm gonna scan it. But it's only gonna be the last portion of it. I didn't do the whole thing.
Yeah, the implementation, yeah, that's, that's what the board's gonna focus on.
Which was, I considered the, uh, executive area with my comments.
I do, I do have comments on the rest of the document that, um, that Dick commented on to make, um, some other editorial changes and things that I will, that I will work with C M R P C on. But as far as a board conversation, I think the recommendation by Richard Harris was just the board should focus on implementation, and I agree. And I do have a few, I did write down, um, some comments that Dick had to, for the board to discuss.
And that is on our agenda for the next meeting.
For the next meeting, yeah. And that was always the plan, because I knew we had multiple public hearings at this meeting, and we didn't, you know, I wanted to wait until we had a lesser agenda to talk about that.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that it was on the public, 'cause I saw on the select board meeting that they really wanna get the master plan approved.
Oh, yeah, I know. I thought you were going in a different direction.
No, 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 no. It's just, I wanted the master plan to came up, and I guess I wanted the public to know that we're working through it.
Yep.
And that's just basically all I wanted to say about that. I can send the whole board my comments when I get them done, as a PDF. I don't think that's violating any.
No, no, it's not a public hearing.
Yep, okay.
Well, I'm gonna pull a Peter Crane then. Is there any other business to come before the board? I'll accept the motion.
Motion to adjourn.
But there again, I have been asked if I could give my copy. And I might give my copy of the master plan away. Just to let you know. So let's have that discussion at, at our next meeting, and let's get it done.